Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, May 2, 2017. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's call a roll.
Councilmember Kristolniak.
Here.
Councilmember Kicker.
Here.
Councilmember Deemer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you. First item on our agenda this evening is to adopt the agenda.
I'll move adoption of the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Deemer, to adopt the agenda. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The agenda is adopted and we are on to proclamations and presentations and I think it's the Chief Wise.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council citizens of Coon Rapids. Yeah, we had another great occasion tonight and I appreciate the council taking a few minutes to talk specifically about our police reserve unit and it's on this occasion where we have our newest graduates. We have 11 new graduates from our Reserve Academy that are joining the police department and I want to say a couple of words to the citizens so they know exactly who our police reserves are. They are citizen volunteers who have taken an interest in serving their community and that interest is expressed through volunteerism directly to the police department. They're visible at a lot of community events, they supplement the police force that's out in the field, they're exceptionally important to the well-being of our city and I like to highlight the reserve unit myself because I began my law enforcement career as a police reserve for the city of Coon Rapids. So, many of them are professionals in other careers and they simply want to do more to give back. Others are law enforcement students that are interested in building a connection with the city of Coon Rapids, which of course I strongly encourage. So, with that on their graduation then, Mr. Mayor, if you could come down front here too, I want to turn the microphone over to our reserve unit commander Sergeant Darren Keisler.
This one down there?
No, I don't think we'll need the microphone but I'll just let Sergeant Keisler take over here.
Okay.
We're about to be surrounded.
Are you waiting at the back?
I'm trying to say it's how does the camera move. I want to make sure Darren gets his movement.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, council members again to echo what Chief Wise said. Thank you for allowing us to take a few minutes out of the night here. Our reserves are a very important part of the, part of the police department. Each year they literally volunteer thousands of hours to the city and the community members. Tonight we're pleased to introduce 11 new members, which is going to take our reserve unit from 13 to 24 members total, which we haven't had that kind of numbers since I've been an officer here at this department at all. So, we're quite excited about that and that many more light blue uniforms that people see on the 4th of July all weekend and all night that weekend.
We always see them at the barricades when we're trying to get in.
Yes. But I'd like to introduce each one of them as they go and then they can receive a certificate from the chief here and then they can just come back into line, that'll be perfect. Okay? First one, Abigail Johnson. Carl Knox. Sarah Kester. Fidel Dixon. Sarah Petchcheck. Tristan Murawski. Vadim Hobets. Sierra Pedersen. Britta Maddox. And Jack Johnson. Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, for giving us a few minutes. If you can just join me in a round of applause for these.
Second item on our agenda, is there anybody here to receive the proclamation this evening?
Ryan Guttersen.
Ryan Guttersen. All right.
You don't trust them.
I have to read from the discussion though because, so we are, at this time we're going to be recognizing our outstanding public work staff as we approach National Public Works Week, which is May 21st through May 27th. I'm not sure how much of this is in the "whereas's" but I know what's not in the "whereas's" is, "The theme this year is Public Works connects us and it celebrates the vital role public works plays in connecting us all together. As the cornerstone of civilization..." I don't know, I've kind of written, read some things in history where I, other things have been referred to as that, but I just thought that was pretty good. Do I have the proclamation up here?
You really put that rock on the corner, it's the cornerstone.
You got a gift from one place to another.
Well, Mr. Guttersen, why don't you come up front then? Because apparently you'll be receiving this. Timing is everything, isn't it? All right. "Whereas, public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets and highways, public buildings and solid waste collection and whereas the health, safety and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities as well as their planning, design and construction are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now, therefore, I Jerry Cook, Mayor of the city of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the city council hereby proclaim the third full week of May as National Public Works Week in the city of Coon Rapids and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort and quality of life proclaimed the second day of May 2017." Mr. Guttersen. Mr. Hammer, while you're up here, do you want to talk about the open house that's coming up soon?
Yes, not this Saturday, next Saturday, May 13th, 10:00 a.m. to noon, open house down at Public Works, what's it, 1831 111th Avenue, right next to the soccer complex. Come on down, bring the kids, play in all the trucks, on the equipment, demonstrations, takeaway activities, so come on down and learn what we do. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. I'm not sure why I'm walking back up here.
Did you have a track?
Walking back to get this, I guess. Is anybody here from the American Legion? Yes. Is anybody here from the VFW?
Um...
No?
We don't see them.
All right.
Well, I am both, but...
You are both.
But tonight I'm representing the American Legion.
All right. Will we come back up here?
Okay.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. So, I'm going to read, I'm sure there was an introduction, I should have read in the discussion points, but we're just going to whip right into the proclamation here.
There you go.
All right. "Whereas, the Coon Rapids American Legion Post 334 and Auxiliary have adopted the poppy as their commemorative symbol and, even though they're not here, the other proclamation is, and the Coon Rapids Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 9625 and the Veterans of Foreign Wars Auxiliary have also adopted the poppy as their commemorative symbol and whereas the memorial poppy assembled by disabled veterans pays respectful tribute to those killed in war and also benefits the living veterans and their families and whereas public donations for poppies fund rehabilitation programs within each local community that benefit veterans, their families and ultimately our state and nation and whereas the basic purpose of the annual distribution of poppies is eloquently reflected in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living. Now, therefore, I Jerry Cook, Mayor of the city of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the Coon Rapids City Council hereby proclaim May 19th and 20th, 2017 to be poppy days urging all citizens of Coon Rapids to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generously and to wear a poppy as mute evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked their lives in defense of the freedoms which we continue to enjoy as American citizens." Proclaim the second day of May 2017. And if you would introduce yourself now.
I'm Diane Bowman. I'm the poppy chairman and one of the chairmans for the Coon Rapids American Legion.
And I'm Joyce Samuel and the president of the auxiliary, last year. I'm not going to do it again.
You've done it several years.
So, thank you for having us.
That's now a matter of public record.
Hey, doesn't bother.
Well, thank you for all of the work that you do with this great cause and you have poppies for these folks?
Yes, and you.
Excellent.
One for you.
Thank you. Thank you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, that's great. I'm not sure if I can touch that. Excellent. Thank you. We're on approval of the minutes of the April 18th, 2017 meeting.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Deemer?
Move to approve the minutes from the April 18th, 2017 meeting.
Second. Motion by Deemer, second by Geisler. Discussion, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Those minutes are approved. We have a few items on our consent agenda. The first item is to adopt Resolution 17-49, appointing William Reichenborn to the Arts Mr. Reichenborn submitted an application for the Arts Commission and attended the February 21st meeting and the April 18th meeting. After the discussion, the Arts Commission recommended that he be appointed to the Arts Commission with the term expiring December 31st, 2019. And I would like to highlight, there are still seven or eight, I'm not sure if he fills one of these eight vacancies, but we still have vacancies on the Arts Commission and that one looks like a fun commission, you know, they do a lot of work with finding the bands and things, but, oh, and Christmas tree lighting, I shouldn't even have started, they have a whole litany of things that they do. All right, so, and next item on the consent agenda is to approve access to the storm water pipe and ponding agreement with Inoka Hennepin School District. And the school district had previously granted and conveyed an expanded stormwater easement to the city, allowing the city to construct a larger storm sewer pipe on school district property and the storm water pipe was improved to a larger capacity as part of the Foley Boulevard reconstruction project. There is no net financial cost to the city under this agreement as the city is paying an identical amount for its expanded easement from the school district as the school district is paying for access to the city storm sewer pipe. It, looking at approving a temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license for the 4th of July community celebration to the Coon Rapids North Star Lions and that will be running from, let's see, from July 2nd through July 4th contingent upon a successful background investigation. And the last item on the consent agenda is to adopt Resolution 17-50, which is a donation, acceptance from Inoka County Grower Association from Farmers Market and I believe they are here, so why don't we go ahead and, we should have them come up and present it and then we'll officially adopt the consent agenda and accept it. Bring my notes along. And apparently this is our third year of a partnership with the Inoka County Grower Association for the Coon Rapids Farmers Market and the Grower Association is donating $500 to the city to assist with the continued support and promotion of the market. Kind of sounds like a win-win for us. Would you like to introduce yourselves?
I'm Sandy Gallier and I'm the secretary treasurer for the Inoka County Growers Association.
And Larry Gallier, past president.
The market will operate from July 12th into October as the growing season permits in the parking lot of the Coon Rapids Ice Center and the market is open each Wednesday from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. and includes eight to 10 vendors each week. This year there are plans to expand upon the special event day held in 2016 with Health and Wellness Day on July 19th, Kids Day on July 16th and Senior Day on September 20th. Align Health will again provide free health checks from their mobile unit July 19th and the Crooked Lake Library will be involved in Kids Day, which is August 16th. So, I probably just stole all your thunder, but is there anything you would like to tell us about or how it's going or anything like that?
Sure. We'd just like to invite everybody out for some fresh produce, want to remind everybody that this is all food that has been grown locally. Our farmers range from Ham Lake, Oak Grove, Dayton, our furthest farmer is down in Taylor's Falls and they're working real hard right now to get the crops in the field. Be reminded too, please, that, you know, it is what is ready at that time for that month, so don't expect to see coconuts and pineapples showing up.
And we are, you have something to give us?
We already gave it.
You already gave it?
Well, thank you.
Well, okay then. Thank you very much for coming and thank you very much for the donation. Thank you. So, the last item on our consent agenda then is Resolution 17-50, accepting the Inoka County Grower Association donation of $500 for the 2017 Farmers Market and it sounds like we better do that since we apparently already have the money somewhere. I believe that's our last item on our consent agenda. Your Honor. Councilmember Wells. Move the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Wells, second by Kicker. Every meeting I have to be retrained, you know. Any discussion or questions from the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. All right, now we've got some contract awards going out for street reconstruction. Item 10, consider Resolutions 17-1/9 and 17-1/12, awarding the contract and adopting assessments for Street Construction Project Number 17-1. The streets within this project area are proposed to be rehabilitated via reconstruction methods. Improvements to the streets include reclamation of the existing bituminous surface and aggregate base, removal and replacement of damaged curb and gutter, sidewalk and pedestrian curb ramp improvements in accordance with ADA requirements, water main pipe valve and hydrant replacements and repairs or replacements to the existing storm sewer and sanitary sewer as needed. And the construction project 17-1, there's 13 streets in there, I'll just go through them quick. University Avenue, Service Road from 104th Avenue to 104th Lane, Alder Street from 104th Avenue to 104th Lane, Butternut Street from 102nd Avenue to the cul-de-sac, Butternut Street from 104th Lane to 105th Avenue, Cottonwood Street from 101st Avenue to 102nd Lane, Dogwood Street from 101st Avenue to Egrit, 101st Lane from University Avenue to Butternut, 102nd Avenue from University Avenue to Cottonwood, 102nd Lane from University Avenue to Dogwood, 103rd Avenue from University Avenue to Dogwood, 104th Avenue, 104th Lane and 105th Avenue, all three streets from University Avenue to Dogwood Street. The open houses were held. The properties proposed to be assessed include 252 single-family residential properties, one duplex and two city-owned properties, which are parks. And there was one contested assessment and the resident has later decided not to pursue his objection any further and if we accept the bid tonight, the work will begin or can begin in mid-May and be completed at the end of September 2017. Sure. Your Honor. Councilmember Kicker?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 17-1/9, awarding a contract to Park Construction Company in the amount of $2,460,290.60 and be adopt the Resolution Number 17-1/12, adopting the assessments for the project 17-1.
Motion by Kicker, second by Geisler. The lowest bids were within $150 of each other on a $2 million project.
Okay, I had a question about that.
Councilmember Deemer?
Actually, you're probably going to say, so, just making sure that it was $2,460.
Oh, is that what, did I say something?
Yeah. That was good.
I'm sure they wouldn't mind being paid the extra amount.
Yeah, yeah. So, I did have a question, I mean, that is insane that they're $150 apart. When it gets that close, are there any additional things we consider, like whether there's a higher overage cost for one company versus the other? And I'm just curious because it's nuts that they're virtually a tie and so then picking the lower bidder because on $150, say, and on the other hand, the second question I was going to ask is, there's two different companies doing the four, you know, if all four of them were the same company, I'd assume we'd have to check for capacity.
Councilmember Deemer, that is correct. We've had that occur in the past where you just send your subcontractor around the whole city and everything gets opened up and that gets to be problematic. What we did do in this case is we did look at who their suppliers and subcontractors were and the general is responsible for all of them. If there are some out there that are questionable, then we have those conversations, but we have the open bid law that's out there, lowest responsible bidder, we found Park to be the lowest responsible bidder and thus the recommendation for award.
And there's no concerns with capacity because it's two, they're each doing two projects, they're not doing more than they can handle?
That's correct and the way we actually wrote the specs is to only allow certain areas to be opened up at any given time. So, we've kind of formulated our plan for how we'd like to see that happen. We'll have a pre-construction meeting next week, they might have a better idea on how to be more efficient, we'll be open to that and as soon as that's completed then we send information out to the people within that area, giving them a window of approximate time when we'll be in their area, but we don't open it all up, we've learned those lessons in the past and so we're confident they can do the work.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. Item 11 is to consider Resolution 17-2/9 and 17-2/12, awarding a contract and adopting assessments for Street Reconstruction Project 17-2 and this is actually one and a half miles of state aid MSA streets by reconstruction as part of Project 17-2. The improvements to the streets proposed for reconstruction include reclamation, ba-da-bum-bum, replacement of damaged curb and gutter, sidewalk and pedestrian curb ramp improvements in accordance with ADA requirements, select water main pipe valve and hydrant replacements and repairs or replacements to the existing storm sewer system as needed. In addition, in addition, the existing six-inch water main along 101st Avenue is proposed to be replaced with a 12-inch water main. Is that so we can get more water over to Blaine faster when they need it?
It's good for our system.
Oh, good for our system, perfect. Open house meetings were held and the properties proposed to be assessed include 26 single-family residential properties, two apartment properties, five commercial properties and one agricultural property, which is assessed as commercial. And if, assuming we're moving forward with this, construction can begin in mid-May and be completed at the end of September 2017. Your Honor. Yeah, Councilmember Deemer?
Move to adopt Resolution Number 17-2/9, awarding a contract to Park Construction Company in the amount of $2,35,295.94 and adopt, move to adopt Resolution Number 17-2/12, adopting the assessments for Project 17-2.
Second.
Motion by Deemer, second by Kicker. Any discussion?
Everyone gets a turn.
Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. Item 12, I'm not going to read all the streets here. Project 17-3 has 24 streets that we're touching and it's similar improvements to the others, reconstruction including the reclamation of the existing bituminous surface and aggregate base, removal and replacement of damaged curb and gutter, sidewalk and pedestrian curb ramp improvements in accordance with ADA requirements, select water main pipe valve and hydrant replacements and repairs or replacements to the existing storm sewer, water and sanitary sewer as needed. Yeah, 24 streets, if you're interested, it's agenda item 12 and it's online. Properties proposed to be assessed include 287 single-family residential properties and 56 condominium townhome properties. And so, we move forward, similar, construction can begin in mid-May and be completed at the end of September 2017.
Your Honor. I'll move adoption of Resolution 17-3/9, awarding the contract to North Valley Inc. in the amount of $1,586,561.41 and also adoption of Resolution 17-3/12, adopting the assessments for Project 17-3.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Wells. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. And then our last street reconstruction is consider Resolutions 17-4/9 and 17-4/12, awarding the contract and adopting assessments for Reconstruction Project 17-4 and this is proposing to improve 2.9 miles of residential streets by reconstruction as part of 17-4. And again, it's 21 separate streets we're working on in this project. The properties proposed to be assessed include 292 single-family residential properties, 20 condominium properties, two apartment properties, six commercial properties and six city-owned properties. There was, there was an objection and the existing exit drive is located, realigned drive. And the existing access drive is located, real line driveway would avoid future maintenance obligations, say agreement will be submitted to council. Oh, okay, so there was an objection and we'll be looking at that appeal later. Yeah.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 17-4/9, awarding the contract to North Valley Inc. in the amount of $1,711,589.58, and to adopt Resolution 17-4/12, adopting the assessments for the project 17-4.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Griscoviac. Discussion? Councilmember Decker.
Since it's the cornerstone of civilizations, special week over here. I just wanted to acknowledge that the total versus the bids, it was almost a million and a half lower in total. So they must have done a good job because that's basically the cost of one whole set of construction. So it's sort of like buy three, get one free, and good job over there to the cornerstone.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that motion carries. All right, and we're moving on to Sunday liquor sales. Consider adoption of Ordinance 2187, amending the city code to allow Sunday off-sale liquor sales. This was introduced at the April 18th council meeting. And just a reminder, Minnesota statute, Chapter 340A.504/4, was recently amended to allow for Sunday off-sale liquor. The legislature allowed for Sunday sales between 11:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., and the ordinance as presented would allow Sunday off-sale liquor hours to match those and be 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. to match what the state statute allows. The ordinance will also establish off-sale hours for growlers on Sundays for small brewers, which are breweries without a restaurant, and establish allowed hours for Sunday sales of growlers by small brewers to match the off-sale hours already in the code for brew pub or brewers with the restaurant operations. And those hours would be 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. So the growler sales, Sundays, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., regular Sunday off-sale liquor hours, 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. to match state statute. And if this is passed, of course, it'll match the state. It'll start on July 2nd. Your Honor. Councilmember Kicker.
I make a motion that we adopt Ordinance 2187, ordinance allowing for off-sale liquor Sunday sales and hours for Sunday growler sales.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Griscoviac. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that July 2nd start date. Yeah, we don't have those rebels out here. All right, we're up to new business. Consider introduction of an ordinance changing zoning from office to general commercial, 124th Avenue and Ivywood Street by Shamrock Development. Is there a presentation on this, Mr. Harlicker?
I would like, I've gotta make a brief presentation.
Would anybody like to see the presentation on this? It's a 6.2-acre parcel, parcels between Main and 124th Avenue. Would you like to see it?
I watched the planning commission meeting, but I could sit through it again.
I didn't, I'd like to see it. Sorry.
It's online, it's easy to see.
I know.
Mr. Harlicker, could we see the presentation?
Certainly.
Maybe our people at home didn't watch it.
Yeah, it's really for them.
Yeah, I totally watched it twice.
Will you want any input from Mr. Thiessen, as long as he's here this evening?
It's totally up to the council.
Sitting quietly in the back, will straighten his hair just in case we call him up.
Yeah, the, good evening, council and mayor. The parcels under consideration are here outlined in black. It's a total of about 6.2 acres. Here's Main Street, Northdale, 124th, Ivywood here, is Menards, Highway 10, entrance ramp. This larger parcel here is about 4.9 acres. This dogleg piece here is about 1.2. Then there's three smaller parcels down here, one of which was a vacated street easement. It's about a tenth of an acre. All the parcels are zoned, office. The applicant is also requesting a corresponding land use plan amendment from office to general commercial. Here's the zoning map. It's really, it's surrounded on the north by community commercial, general commercial, general commercial to the west, and then Highway 10 to the east. It is in kind of a unique position here with surrounded by commercial and highway. And then on the south side is an established residential neighborhood, and then three twin homes right here. Really, the most developable portion of this property is the rectangle here. The rest of this, because of its shape and setback requirements and buffering requirements, would probably be best suited and most likely used for stormwater management. At the planning commission meeting, there were some neighbors that came and spoke at the meeting. Several of them were twin home residents, and they were concerned really about what's gonna happen behind them. We explained the situation, the way it's laid out. It's not likely to get fully developed, but it'll be most likely used as stormwater management in open space. They were also concerned, expressed concerns about traffic on 124th and the need for the extended wait times at the stoplight there at Northdale, as well as the condition of 124th Avenue. They thought it was in pretty rough shape. All three of those, those issues are more site development related as opposed to the proposed zone change. Those issues are gonna have to be addressed no matter what, how the property develops, either as office, under office zoning, or general commercial zoning. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
And this has been zoned office since 1986.
The larger portion here has, was since 1986. The smaller lots, I believe it was in 2007, they were changed office.
Seems like they've kind of exhausted that office market.
It's been there for a while.
Thirty-one years, it's like not happening, maybe it's time to move on.
Questions from council? No? Apparently that was a very comprehensive presentation.
One question.
Councilmember Decker.
So, you know, I was looking through the uses list, and general commercial, I mean, it's basically just about anything is permitted. Was there any discussion of anything other than general commercial? You know, something like, for example, the community commercial above or anything like that? Or was it, is there a reason we picked general commercial where the, there's very little we could restrict at that point?
Councilmember Decker and council, this was what the applicant proposed. General commercial is, or excuse me, community commercial is kind of a, it's kind of an outdated zoning district. It was really set up when we were getting the big boxes and the smaller outlots around it. That's where that zoning district came from. But yeah, general commercial is the most liberal of the commercial zoning districts.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much, Mr. Harlicker. And this is just an introduction this evening. So we will consider Planning Case 17-7 introduced. And I would imagine we will be relooking at this at our May 16th council meeting then? Yes? And item 16 under new business? No, wait a minute. Yep, yep, item 16, got to cross that out. Consider the 2017-2018 Police Officers Labor Agreement. And this will be a two-year contract. And Mr. Stemwell, is there anything you want to cover on this?
Mayor, council, I'll just mention that the cost of living increase matches what has been settled for both non-represented employees for 2017 and then two other unions within the city for 17 and 18. There are, as you can see, a number of other changes in the contract. So at the end of the day, management feels like it's a fair, fair contract. Certainly, there are a number of things from our perspective that we were able to accomplish and vice versa. So all in all, it was a good deal for both sides.
We love, we love these guys, but for budget purposes, tell us it was hard fought.
Mayor, council, certainly there was back and forth about a number of things, fortunately or unfortunately. I guess depending on your viewpoint, the cost of living increases had been established, so that part is officially resurfaced by the time we make it to the third or fourth contract.
Sure. There's an advantage to going last, it's already, you're kind of beat down then.
Sure.
Your Honor. Councilmember Wells.
Move council adopt Resolution 17-51, approving the labor agreement between the city and law enforcement labor services, Local 207.
Second.
Motion by Wells, second by Johnson. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that contract was unanimously passed. All right, we are at open mic. Is anybody here for open mic this evening, public comment? All right. I'll read the little introduction here. "Open mic provides an opportunity for the public to address the city council on subjects that are not part of the regular meeting agenda. The public is invited to express any concerns they may have, which are relevant to the affairs, policies, or practices of the city of Coon Rapids, and remarks will be limited to three minutes." You're already there?
Possible to plug in some pictures or not?
I don't think, I don't, I don't know.
No?
Do you need them for three minutes?
Well, I just wanted to show you the conditions, so. I live on 11928 Grouse Street Northwest in Coon Rapids. It's all over by Lyons Coon Creek Park. And I have the, we call it the creek, but it's a, I think it's drainage ditch number 56 in our backyard. And many years ago, the city did come in, I fought the city for three years when we first moved there, and they did come in and they did a great job, and it's deteriorating. And I've got, where the timbers came into the yard and then they did the timbers along the creek. When we mow, it's up and down, up and down, up and down, because the dirt has run away and the creek gets high and it overflows. I mean, it floods up 10, 15 feet sometimes when we have big rains. And so I just would like it, have it looked at. When we had the neighborhood meetings, the former mayor came to the Lyons Coon Creek Park and three of us talked to him about it, and they said they'd send somebody out, and they did. They sent someone out to look at the part where it comes out of the cul-de-sac behind me. And there was probably 12 people, 10 of them stood around, two people did the work. We have timbers that are falling into the water. We've got timbers that have floated away onto someone's property. So I'm just wondering if we can get someone to take a look at it. Public works would be great.
They are the cornerstone of civilizations.
I've heard that.
Well, and the other thing is, if you can send those pictures to the city clerks, you would send them to the council. So at least we would be able to all see what you've brought in. And then somebody will get a response for you, and I'm sure that will include somebody coming out and taking a look at it again. But now this is in the public record here, and this is, we'll find out what's going on.
And I know that the comment has been that too many people have put fences up, and we were one of them, and we knew that if they ever came in, they'd come down. But because of the freeze and thaw, so much rain coming in, our posts heaved up probably a foot and the fence was falling into the water, so we just took it out.
Sure.
So.
And did you get the name? I'm sorry, I missed the name. Oh, can we get your name now?
Joni, J-O-N-I, Brooks.
Okay, thank you. Do you have something?
No.
Oh, okay, yeah, thank you very much.
Thanks, Joni.
Your Honor. Councilmember Wells.
In regards to this, you know, maybe we could have, you know, some time in a workshop. I know in my neighborhood, there's a lot of, a lot of concerns about Coon Creek and, and there seems to be a lot of finger pointing as who's responsible, you know? Councilmember Johnson's old organization or who.
I now serve the city of Coon Rapids. Let that be clear.
You know, because there is work that needs to be done, and I know it's expensive. And, but maybe we, you know, I'd like to get more information to get a handle on what, if anything, we can do. All right, anybody else for open mic this evening? All right, we will close that portion of the meeting. We don't have any reports on previous open mics. And we are at other business. Council, any other business? Ms. Lenzman?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to remind residents that we have our annual rabies vaccination clinic this Saturday at fire stations 1, 2, and 3 from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. There's more info on the website if you have questions.
Excellent. Yeah, I noticed on Facebook that they had questions for the fire department. The fire department had to come back and go, okay, we're just hosting it. We're not actually doing the rabies shots, so.
We'll use a veterinarian at all.
Yeah. The questions got technical right away.
Your Honor, excuse me, Sand Creek Park is functioning. You know, weekly softball's going on, and I know this weekend is the, I believe, the first tournament in New Park, obviously the first of several. So, you know, it looks good up there, so we'll see how it works.
Excellent. Mr. Stemwell.
Speaking of Sand Creek, I'll just add on to that, that it's an early plug, but May 26th will be the open house, grand opening of Sand Creek Park, tying in with our movies in the park. So it'll be rip your floats and bouncy houses, things like that, and kind of shove off the new park in good fashion. And it'll be officially open at that time, although there's a lot of activity out there today, as you mentioned, so.
So the bounce houses will be for a fee though, right?
We're still working on that. We've got some sponsorships of some components, so we're kind of working through the final details of what's gonna be free and what's a cost.
All right, excellent.
I think you're too big.
For you, there'll be a fee.
All right, fine. Any other business to come before council this evening? Move for adjourned?
Second.
Motion by Decker, second by Kicker to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.